All right, I'd like to call to order the August 27th meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody, and we will do our roll call. Michelle, will you do the roll, please?
Yes. Petway here. Maderas.
Here.
Poole.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Granland.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Superintendent Stendman.
Here.
Thank you very much. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next, we'll move on to our agenda approval adjustments and announcements, starting with the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Laura, in a second.
Second.
Second by Jessica. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Next, we have our announcements. On September 3rd, coming up here really quick is the first day of school. September 10th, it's actually at 4:45 PM is the Subcommittee on Policy here in the Community Room. September 10th at 5:00 PM is the Subcommittee on Community Engagement in the Training Room. September 10th at 6:00 PM is our regular School Board meeting, and September 17th at 5:30 PM is our work session here in the Community Room. Next, we have our communication to the Board, and at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the Administration follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting, requests presented at this time, and time will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Do you two want to say anything? Okay. The only two other people in the room. Next, we have our consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the personnel report from August 27th, School Board minutes from August 14th and August 20th work session, the Brightworks membership, and the policy first reading, which have legislative updates, Policy 524 Internet Technology and Cell Phone Acceptable Use and Safety Policy. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved? Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion to... Oh, yes. Mary. Wow. That went right around in my brain. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. It's a long day already. Any discussion? Right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. In my mind, instead of asking for a motion, I was calling for the vote already, so don't... Sorry about that. Next, we have our discussion reports and information items, starting with reports from members of the Board, and we will start with Vice Chair Granland.
Oh, boy. Okay, so, um, we... It's been a busy lead-up to the first day of school, so I had the joy of being able to attend the Scaling the Heights last week and lead a van full of new staff around our district and talking about all the things that makes our staff and our community just amazing. I especially loved that we went into the Heights Theater and got to hear a little bit of history, and then share lunch, and just get a chance to sit down and get to know each other. It was really great to see the email from Director Tuckrell with the outline of the things that the staff had said about feeling really supported and excited and transparent about our district, which was great. I have had several conversations with community members. It's been a lot of talk about how our school district is growing and how many staff we've been adding and the supports that we're able to get now. A lot of thanks to the community for their votes. Had a chance to meet with Mayor Amava Marquez Simula, met with Members Petway and Maderas, phone calls with Chair Mueller and Superintendent Stenvik, and then right before this, I attended the Columbia Academy Open House, which was busy, fantastic. All, you know, got a chance to meet at least one of my son's teachers there, and then I went to the chair meeting and came here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yep, just a few things. So I attended the Scaling the Heights event as well. It's very nice to see a lot of the new faces that are going to be in our district. I got to sit with North Park and welcome teachers to the school, and being a North Park parent, give them, you know, background and more information and just hear their stories. So that's always fun. So this'll be my second time. I really enjoyed it a little bit more. It was less pressure than last year, so it was cool. And then I attended last week's work session, and I also attended an event called Nerd Caucus with other elected officials, and there was nerd trivia from, you know, well, there was no, there was no science or math on there, thank goodness, but, you know, we went to space, we came back, gone into different realms, and it was a lot of fun. So I really enjoyed that, and that's all I have this week, surprisingly.
Awesome. Thank you. Laura?
Well, I don't have a whole lot to report out on. I did, of course, attend the work session last week, and today, the Executive Committee session over at 916 was with regards to the superintendent evaluation. So we were doing some assessment and feedback situations and stuff, and then that will be reported out at our next scheduled Board meeting, which is next Wednesday. So, and then it will be public knowledge. So, that's it for me.
Great, thank you. Jessica?
Sure. Many of the same back-to-school activities and conversations. Like many of you, I attended the new teacher luncheon as part of Scaling the Heights. I also really enjoyed that event. I think what was, what I observed was just already, even though that was day two, I think, of their week, that they had already started really forming community with one another, which was really exciting to see. I also attended the work session before, or the School Board work session last week. My family and I attended the pizza class through Community Ed last week. We are loving all of the cooking classes over there. It was full, they added a second night, and they're going to be also having another event in October. They're going to make apple and pear crisp, so like family and child cooking class, lots of fun. And then I also attended the Columbia Academy Open House before this event this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
I also attended the work session last week and the luncheon with the staff for Scaling the Heights, and I have to admit, that was probably my favorite. This year, I met, I'm in the, I'm the liaison to the family center, and meeting the ECFE teachers and just their excitement, even, you know, I had a returning teacher, and then I got to meet some of the teachers that, at the elementary level, and just had a really an eye-opener. They're so excited to be here, and I really loved it. So I just wanted to mention that for those teachers that we met.
That's awesome. Great, thank you. Very much the same. I also had the pleasure of being a tour guide on the bus tour for the new staff, and if there's any reason to be Board Chair, that's it. Right? Like, that's a lot of fun. So we, I had a blast just getting to know and helping them learn more about our amazing community, so that was a lot of fun. Also, as Mary said, I had a conversation with Vice Chair Granland. I was not at the work session last week, and again, thank you to Vice Chair Granland for chairing that meeting, and for all of you. I have been filled in during that conversation with Mary on the discussion, so thank you. And I attended the chair meeting just prior to this. Next, we will move on to the Superintendent's Report and Correspondent Superintendent Stenvik.
Thank you. We're currently reviewing guidance on heat index, so given we are having more and more hot days, and also just noting that Columbia Academy and Valley View, neither of those two schools have a cooling system. Some districts keep students home when the heat index is, which is a combination of temperature and humidity, right? When that heat index reaches 105, and when the school does not have air conditioning. So Minnesota law accounts for inclement weather days, and I think it's commonly acknowledged at that level that it's, that's referring to cold weather days, and so I'm working through my channels to ensure that we can do, possibly do e-learning when the heat index reaches, you know, ticks into that danger zone for those two schools. So I may be coming to the Board at an upcoming meeting. We may need to indicate something on the Board-approved calendar that there could be e-learning days for heat index as well as, as the inclement weather, cold days. So something that we're working with, we're working closely with the Teachers Union on this issue as well. Have had lots of good conversations with them, and, you know, we're having more and more hot days. Monday was a great example of, well, an example, not great, but an example of that. So, so that's one thing that we're working on. Last week, I attended the Brightworks Board meeting and also had a chance to meet all the new MDE staff that are now being housed at Brightworks, working on the Science of Reading and the Read Act work, so that was very exciting to meet them, and we'll see what comes of that now that they have so many more people to support schools. Staff are back on campus, and it's been really busy this week already. We've had professional development, particular, in areas particularly, language acquisition, Avid, and of course, the Science of Reading. I've been out, been able to get out to some of the buildings, and the staff are working really hard to prepare classrooms to welcome students next week. And I just want to thank the Buildings and Grounds Crew for really tending to both a power surge and then a power outage yesterday afternoon, and also gratitude to the Columbia Heights Police Department and Fire Department who came, because due to the surge, we had some smoke in one of our buildings, and they quickly came, and all is well. So, yeah, people worked into the night last night supporting that issue, and, but we're happy that things are restored, and we have lights and internet and everything else again. So that's my report.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, we have our Capitol Project update with Director Hennigans.
All right. Well, I should be all logged in here, so this should go a little bit quicker. Let's see here. There we go. Just needed to order it. Thank you, Chair Mueller. Okay. Members of the Board and Superintendent Stenvik. So this evening, I'm just going to do a brief presentation on updates on Capitol Projects that have come to the Board in the past year for summer projects this year in 2024. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Again, aligning with the CHPS Board of Education Equity Statement. So this is in our governance. We've already done that part. We're, we're working on the projects. It's just an informational presentation. So again, that those major projects that were brought to the Board, Highland Roof, Section A, Long-Term Facility Maintenance, Columbia Heights High School Ware Washing Project, Food Service and Capitol Projects Levy, and the High School Stadium Lights, Capitol Projects Levy. So Highland Roof Project, picture of Highland here on the right, and the section of roof, it looks like three different sections, but it's really just one section in the picture, Section A, and that's what we're replacing. So it's a 1995 roof, and so we had called a bid October 24th, bid opening on November 21st, and then Board action on December 12th. And again, we had substantial completion August 2024. They're actively working on that, and this is one of the rain days out on the roof, so you can see it looked very wet up there. But what this picture shows you, on the left corner, upper-left corner there of the roof, you can see it sloping, so that's the new part. That's where they built it up, and so the roof is actually increasing by eight to 10 inches in thickness in some areas. That's just the amount of additional insulation that's going on the roof, and creating the pitch, appropriate pitch for our drains, which our roofs in the past were a little flatter than they should have been, lacked the amount of drains that they needed in today's standard, anyway. And so we're increasing insulation, we're increasing that pitch, and we're increasing the amount of floor dr, or roof drains, and so we have better water movement off the roof. With this project, you can see in the middle there, we have these two large pipes, that's electrical, that feeds the whole office in that wing of the building, which had to be moved, so that, of course, creates a complicating factor of shutting power off to the office before the start of the school year. So all that's gone well, and they're fairly close to being substantially complete with this part of it. What you'll see is you'll see the flashing around the outside, that's not going to go up for quite a while here, quite a while, being maybe a month, just because of lead time on getting material. So it's, that's not going to hinder the actual roof working the way we want it to, which is keeping the water out. So we did get a little water in this last rainstorm, where they're, the point of where they haven't completed to the point where they have completed, so that area, that tie-in right there, we got a little bit of water in there, so a little bit of water in the hallway, so nothing, nothing drastic that caused any real damage, a couple ceiling tiles, so easily, easy to deal with, but that project is moving forward, and, and again, next week they should be, well, this week, they should be wrapping that up. Of course, the rain we got again last night and this morning didn't help matters much, but, but we're looking good there. So High School Ware Washing Project, called a bid was January 23rd, bid opening was February 22nd, Board action March 12th, which is a little bit later for a summer 2024 project. And kitchen's been inspected and, and open for use. We have some punch list items to go through still, but we got a pass from the Health Inspector. We have some items that we have to fix for them when they come back out at the end of this month, but nothing major, some caulking, but in general, we are open for business down there, and we've already actually cooked a little bit of food for, as a freshman orientation, I think, perhaps. So this is the new dish machine. In the past, the old dish machine was probably about triple the size of that current machine, and it went across the middle of the room, and it was really, you know, built for two people to operate minimally, because you actually needed to have people in the front loading it, and you had to have people in the back unloading it as it came through, which was challenging at best, because a lot of times you could only have one person in there. And so now, you have, we have one window opening, you know, it gets loaded from that aspect, and then there's rollers around the outside that allow the trays to go out, so one person can operate it. If we get too many, there's a shut-off at the end, so it shuts it off, and, and then the person can go and unload the things, and, you know, so it works out well. So this is the, the new ware wash space. Along with this, we have new flooring, so you can see that gray flooring, it's a thick rubberized flooring, which is fantastic, so very happy with that. Remember when I came to the Board before, or maybe was after that, but our, some of our equipment had spraying underneath that was basically dead in the sound, but that had asbestos in it. So basically, all of our equipment in that space, I mean, tables and sinks had that underneath it. So, and it was all original items gone. So then we had a, this is just the four-compartment sink here, so it used to be a three-compartment, now it has fourth, which is the disposal, and this was located in the kitchen before, not in the ware washing space, because with that old dish machine, there was not any space for it, so it's nice to have that in there now, where we actually are washing the dishware. So this is the kitchen area, so on the right, lower right here, this is where that three-compartment sink used to be. We still have a sink there that's utilized, but all of this is all, all brand-new, partially because we moved that sink, partially because, again, of the asbestos abatement that took place, and we had to put in all new, new furniture, or new workspace, table, tabletops. So in the top left is the rest of the kitchen and the prep space, so along the wall is fruits and vegetable washing station, and some of the, the cabinetry on that, along that wall was not even stainless steel, it was just kind of old, you know, I don't know, 50s cabinetry it looked like. So it's really nice to have it updated and modernized and just a better workspace. The kitchen staff is so happy right now, and it is just really a great functional space. So with a little bit of increased capacity in cooking, we added another oven to the space as well, so. High School Stadium Lights Project, so this is what the new lights look like in the evening. Board action on April 9th, it was a, we used a pre-bid contract for the lights, but new LED system, and this was, Jake took this picture, actually. He couldn't, couldn't stand it anymore, he had to see the lights on, so he stayed late and turned the lights on and, and took a picture, and, and just really happy with the way it turned out and looks, and, you know, the reality is significant energy savings by having these LED lights versus the older lightings that were out there, so, I mean, with those lights, when you flipped them on, you practically see the meter move, and, so you're super happy with this project, and, you know, anticipate for years to come that when we turn the lights on, they'll come on and they'll stay on for the, any of the events, whether it's lacrosse, soccer, football, whatever's happening out there. So those are done, that's completed project, and there's nothing left to do on that one. So forecasting for summer 2025, originally, we anticipated with our roof study that we did five years ago, that Highland was going to be our last replacement roof for a while, and, and then we were just going to move on to systematically refurbishing roofs, and we've done some testing throughout Columbia Academy as a couple, well, really one main section, that there's more wet insulation than, in wet insulation areas than what we would see in a refurbished versus a replace. So there's a section at Columbia Academy that we just have to replace. It is a 1995 section, and so we anticipate putting that out to bed here soon, so I'll be coming to the Board asking for approval on that. We will continue to be working on District Mechanical. We're trying to focus on controller replacement right now, so updating these controllers is a lot, gives us a little bit more functionality within the system, reporting within the system. The software works better with the newer controllers versus the older ones, so we're going to continue to work on that. We know that we have more major HVAC needs across the district, you know, really completely building replacements that are necessary, both heating and cooling, and so right now, this keeps us moving forward and keeps us, gives us, giving us the ability to be able to manage what we have better, and, you know, leading into those bigger things in the future that we need to, to look at. Brick tuck pointing, we haven't done anything major with brick tuck pointing in a few years. We anticipated to really roll into some brick tuck pointing after we were done with the roofs, so unless something comes up major that we have, so basically, like we had four years ago now, I think, Columbia, maybe it was five years ago, Columbia Academy, the whole, the gym roof is above the roof line of the rest of the building, and that brick, all that wrapped around that, basically, a heavy rain, the rain would just go right into the tuck pointing of the brick, and then it would leak down into the basement of the Columbia Academy, and that was happening every time you'd have a heavy rain that was, you know, any kind of wind driving. And so if we experience that, obviously, we'll be doing some brick tuck pointing, but right now, I anticipate we might wait another year, tackle the roof, and then start that brick tuck pointing. Look, we've identified North Park, some areas in North Park as our highest need at this point, so I don't, I don't know exactly, we'll just, we'll see how that works out. Potentially, if Columbia Academy roof comes in at a decent enough price, maybe we can do it this year, that's why I included it on here, just because we're not 100% sure. We are going to continue to look at deferred maintenance projects on the interiors. We've been doing smaller projects. We did six classrooms at the high school this year, so not insignificant, but there are, there are projects there, so continuing to look at areas that have old flooring underneath that is asbestos tile or asbestos glue, abating that, because the carpet above it is way be, or not way beyond, but at its life expectancy, and abating that and dealing with those classrooms, and probably doing another group of those classrooms. So those are the projects that we're looking at for 2025. Obviously, there's going to be some other things that come up, there always is, that we have to deal with, but this is what we're projecting for right now. Oh, and so the, this, these pictures here are from Columbia Academy. So last year, at Columbia Academy, we did, you know, that serving area and kitchen remodel, or partially kitchen, kind of the ware washing space there a little bit, and we didn't really do anything in the cafeteria space, and we had grant funding, ship grant funding, and so we utilized some of that ship grant funding, and so the two walls that had, you know, that checkered green tile, this is the two walls now.
Yeah.
So we, we cleaned the whole wall, and one of, one wall is focused on Heights Pride, so home of the Highlanders, and then the other wall, you know, more of a nature scene, so pictured here. So I wanted to show those, because they just got put up last week, super fun to see that in the space, and happy that we're, we're also looking at new cafeteria tables for that space. So that's in process right now, food service, they changed the rules, and with food service dollars, they will, as long as we have a surplus, they will allow us to buy cafeteria tables now, which previously we could not, and so we will have enough to be able to do cafeteria tables at this building, and they are the oldest ones. They are in very bad shape. They are very difficult to operate for the custodial staff, and so we're, we are going to do that. So really, after this year, this, this cafeteria and that kitchen space there has really been, completely done at Columbia Academy, so very happy with that. But that is it.
Great. Questions? Mary first.
So I wanted to say thank you so much for putting the pictures up. At the end, I was going to say something, because I was just there and I sat on those tables to fill out the paperwork, so everybody fill out your paperwork, even if you don't think you qualify, please do. But I saw that picture on the wall, and it was so wonderful to see our students playing band, you know, and recognizing some of them, too, so it does, it makes it feel so much more warm than it had felt before. The other picture's great, but I'm partial to the blue and gold.
Yes.
So nice work. I was going to say something about it anyway, so I'm glad you ended on it, because otherwise it would have been completely out of the topic, but I think it was a great, great job and a really good investment, so.
Yep.
Julie?
So since we recently had a power surge.
Yes.
I'd like to know if our electrical needs updating, and when is that on the menu?
I mean, there, there's no doubt that there's areas that we can work on to improve. I mean, we do have, in 1998, when they redid a lot of the buildings, and that's when the big technology influx happened, and we have two different kinds of panels in the district now. We have panels that have additional surge protection for our computer systems, I mean, that's what their intention was for, and then we have our other panels that were just the way they always have been, they just supply power, and we, we always, they were always referred to as clean power and dirty power, but really, it's, the clean power is just, it's just surge protected at the panel level. So we do have that, and so we have, there was an acknowledgement at that point that, hey, these things happen to us often enough. Typically, those, from the power grid, we, you wouldn't anticipate to see, feel those, or have those surge, is you would see it from lightning strikes, but we also have lightning protection throughout our roofs, which are in property liability, people are always super happy to hear that all of our roofs are lightning protected throughout. throughout. So but we will have to talk, we will talk to Excel Energy some more about if there's anything else additional that we can do about that besides the surge protective panels that we already have. We haven't, I mean, yes, it caught, created problems. It took systems offline. And then ultimately, we had a power outage. But in general, we didn't have any major problems. I mean, we had an older light fixture, so that's been retrofitted for LED that had a ballast inside of it that burned up. And so that can happen on its own without a surge. But in this case, it's just tied together. So, you know, I think that there's definitely areas that we can look to, but I don't know that there's anything major that we can do to additionally protect us from that. I hope that Excel Energy can do a little bit more to protect us from these power surges. I think it's the third one we've had in the last two years that came from the grid. So it's not that we haven't. So, but it's a good question, what more can we do? So.
And following up on that, you mentioned that the reason there was smoke was because of retrofitting LEDs to older.
Well, it was, it wasn't the retrofit that happened. It was just the, it's the older, it's the older light fixture itself, the component within it that burned. It didn't start on fire. I mean, it's got hot and smoked and melted the wires and created the smoke. But putting the LED bulbs in there didn't do it. It's just, that's just the cause of it. I mean, that's just the light that is there. So it's not a new light that, you know, melted and, but, but I'm sure the surge is what caused it. I mean, it's.
I guess I'm just concerned if we have thousands of those situations that we could have a fire and be, somebody could be injured. So I think we should probably have a plan to look at what we, what caused, we know what caused it, but do we have more risk? And so I just think that might be helpful to look at.
Yeah. Definitely questions that could be asked.
So what does that mean? Like maybe have an inspector come out or like, like what would that be? If we like added? Yeah.
Thanks. I would just say that after such events, we typically do an after-action review, which, which we haven't had a chance to do today, but will be in, in the works, which means that the team gets together and perhaps with the fire department to review what happened and then talk about what went well and what could happen in the future. So that's part of our standard operating practices when we have such events is to do an after-action review. So that's coming.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Jessica.
I wanted to thank you too for the presentation. It's really nice to see the results of the projects. I think especially the ware washing project, that's going to make such a substantial, probably already has made a substantial difference in the daily activities of our food service staff, so thank you for that. I was also at Columbia Academy right before this and my son noticed the walls in the cafeteria right away. And he said, wait, that wasn't here last year. That wasn't here last year. And he goes, it looks good. So. Give at least one review.
Right, we got one.
From the students in the district there. I just wanted to go back to the, the mechanical discussion. In light of, you know, we've, you talked about some of the challenges we have around just managing the size and what we have and what we need. In light of Superintendent Stenbik earlier talking about heat index and how it impacts our, our buildings that lack cooling systems. I recently had a conversation with a parent about Columbia Academy specifically and the heat there. So just thinking about, I guess, how specifically the two buildings that don't have cooling systems, how that, how the feasibility or non-feasibility of having cooling in those buildings aligns overalls with our capital project planning.
Well, it's a, it's a longer, it's a larger conversation. It's from, from just a sheer cost perspective. I mean, it's, that's, that's where it really lies. You can't, a lot of it, you can't just piecemeal it together. I mean, it's really a complete system overhaul. So if you have an elementary that's, you know, projected 10 to 15 million dollar expense to be able to overhaul and turn, you know, replace, you know, all of basically the HVAC throughout the building, with the exception of some of the rooftop units that wouldn't need to be, but, and then putting a chiller in that doesn't exist now, which needs to have a location. I mean, all of these things need to be planned for and, and take time. In a larger project like that, you can't do in a year. Like if, we couldn't start right now for next summer, we would, we would be starting right now for the, the summer after that. It's, and then there's the financing of it, which is the bigger problem. Capital projects levy, long-term facility maintenance dollars and capital dollars in our district do not pay for that. Larger districts, you know, have enough long-term facility maintenance dollars that where they could say, yep, we're going to do that elementary building this year. And they could start picking buildings, you know, and doing it that way. We, smaller districts, districts our size, even districts twice as big as us, don't have that kind of money to be able to do that. So that's where we have to get into the conversation about what are other options, which we are exploring. And our new financial advising company, Ellers, we're working with them. So more in that future, long-term thinking of what it takes. Because it will take that large of a scale of a, of a plan in order to really affect a building like Valley View or Columbia Academy.
Thank you. I think that's important context is maybe folks in the community or in our buildings see these projects that we're doing from year to year and making maybe like a comparison like, oh, how come we're, we're choosing to do A, B, or C when we don't have, you know, a cooling system at Valley View or whatever it may be. But it's just important for people to understand, like the overall picture and all of the pieces that go into sort of long-term capital planning. So thank you for that.
And we'll, we'll add this as a future conversation and a work session to just get more details.
Great. Thank you.
Laura.
I had just had a brief question. Seeing that we're working on Columbia Academy roof again, it seems to be an ongoing. I'm glad you, we spotted it before winter, when it's a lot more difficult, I'm sure, to get it repaired. But I don't remember it being on our schedule coming up. So what, what is, is that, because it feels like we just did that not too long ago?
Not Columbia Academy. Valley View we just did. Before Valley View, we were at the high school. Before the high school, we were at North Park. And so Columbia Academy had all of its roofs done in the 95, 98. And so they're basically practically all the same age. And, but all the sections are weathering differently. A big part of that is drainage and, you know, is water sitting on it or not sitting on it? And so I would anticipate in that, in the section that I'm talking about for next year and looking at for replacement, we'll be adding additional drainage on that roof. And just to allow, allow for better drainage and, and better life expectancy for the roof.
So we did patching because I remember when we had to put the guardrails up along the roof to be, for safety, because we were having an issue up there at one point. And we had some leaking into the media center. So that was just a patch. We didn't.
Yeah, I think the leaking, yeah. Yeah, the leaking in the media center was heavily related to the skylights that exist over our media center at Columbia Academy.
Which is very nice, actually.
Very nice. Very problematic with water. We had that storm that went through and took out a couple of them. And the entire computer lab got drenched. So a number of years ago, that was over a decade ago, I think. So, yes, they, they're very nice, but they have been a little bit of a headache over the years. So, and that, and that was one of them. We had water that came into the media center two different times because of them.
Okay, so 95, that definitely seems like we are looking at roofs for quite a number of years over their projects, because that's got to be patched.
If we can, if, yeah, if we can refurbish the other sections, we can get another, you know, 15 years out of them. And it's a significant price difference and then replacing. So extending the roof's life is what we want to do. We can do that and still maintain a level of warranty within that. And we work with Garland on that in our roof study. So that's what we want to do over the life of the roof, if we can extend it by doing that. Long-term, we spend less money on roofs. So I'd like to spend less money on roofs.
Thank you.
One final question for you. I think unless anybody else has any other questions. Going back to the very beginning of your presentation, the Highland roof, you had said that the coping metal was going to be a little bit delayed because of materials. Before school starts next week, or I should say, after school starts next week, is there going to be any roof besides the coping metal that still needs to be done? Will they still be working up there?
No, they, they, what they've told me so far is that they're going to be done. I hope that we don't see, I didn't look at the weather, actually, the next couple of days here. But that's been our, our problem. I mean, initially, the forecast for the last two weeks of August, where there's going to be no rain, it was going to be great. And now we've seen a few storms roll through and that just slows things down. But they're supposed to still be complete with all of the tarring and that part of the roof work. It's, it's just going to be that metalwork that's going to be left.
Yeah, and that, and that, quite honestly, it was the tarring that was going to be the, it was the reason for my question. Because that can be really problematic for people in the building and for students because.
Oh, absolutely. It's strong.
Is strong. So I'm not at all concerned about the metal, other than, you know, making sure students are safe if they're outside or, you know, what have you. But that, the smell can be really problematic.
I do have a kind of a slightly part of your field here. The sidewalk's going to be done before school starts?
Yes. I mean, they're still projected. Yeah, that's, so that's part of the safer routes to schools through the city. So that's a city grant. We, you know, we're not really involved, we are involved in it, but it's not our project. It's theirs. And yes, they're projecting to be done and things are looking good. Very happy, particularly with Valley View Elementary and that new sidewalk along Fillmore that'll allow for drop for parents and it'll really help with traffic over there on Central and in and out of that parking lot, or not Central, on 49th, in and out of the parking lot there. So very excited about that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Director Hennington.
Thank you.
All right, next we have our policy first reading. So for our policy first reading, we have policy 514 bullying prohibition policy, including cyberbullying, 610 field trips, and 620 credit for learning. So these policies in their current proposed revised date through the policy subcommittee are available on our website. So they are available for the public to take a look at. So if you're watching, please do that. Any questions on policy first reading?
Just this one. Are there any substantial changes?
I don't think on any of these that there were substantial changes. I think, we do have the redline versions available, right? So, yeah, that would be on the redlines. I don't think we had any real substantial changes. I can't, do you guys recall?
I don't think there was. Can't recall. They usually come in, they usually come in chunks.
Yeah, and I know that there have been some other policies that we had quite a bunch of discussion on and some that we actually tabled. But these, I believe, we had some, what I'll call our kind of standard update changes.
It's just specifically the bullying one is usually the one that, that tends to get, to get, to get tweaked on a regular basis, so. I miss being on the policy subcommittee because I don't know all the details, but.
We miss you too. Great. Thank you. Next we have our action items. Our first action item is building capacity. Superintendent Stenbik.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board. We continue to review and receive a lot of students enrolling. And we're looking at Valley View, particularly third grade for this evening. I believe the, the current enrollment is 28 and 29 in each of the three classrooms. So really is time to, to close, to open enrollment, that grade, grade level three at Valley View. Sometimes it can be tricky to close prior to the start of the school year in case families don't show up. But the staff at Valley View has been very diligent in calling all of the families and then also collaborating closely with the placement center. So we, we feel that the numbers are very accurate. So this evening, I'm seeking approval for, to close Valley View Elementary School, grade three, to open enrollment during the 24, 25 school year or until this grade level is no longer beyond capacity. And at that time, I would come back to the board to discuss opening. Additionally, I'll just note that we are also looking at fifth grade numbers, both at Valley View and North Park. They're getting up there. So possible September 10 board meeting, you know, depending on how, how that shakes out. Fifth grade at Highland still has some room. And so, of course, we have right of assignment for open enrollment. So we do have space. So that's what I'm seeking this evening is grade three Valley View closure. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the closure of Valley View Elementary, grade three during the 2024, 2025 school year to open enrollment or until this grade is no longer beyond capacity?
So moved.
Laura, second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Mary.
So one thing that I think can be kind of confusing, so I want to make sure that we're understanding it correctly. So open enrollment means anybody who lives outside of the district. So if somebody had said they live in northeast Minneapolis and they want to come to our district, and they were a third grader and they wanted to go to Valley View, we would say no. However, if they moved into Columbia Heights, Southern Fridley, Hilltop, then we would always have capacity for students that are moving within our district. Is that correct?
Yes, we would say to an open enrolled family that we might have another option for them, since we've got three different elementary schools. If we're a middle school or high school, we only have one of each of those. But yes, students who live within the district boundaries have, you know, we, we are obligated to, to allow them to enroll and we do that.
I wanted to double check because I'd received a lot of questions about that and that was my understanding as well, but it's always good to sort of get that out and just remind folks that it's, you know, as long as you live within the boundaries, you will get to come to school in our district, so. Thank you.
Julie.
I just noticed on the recommendation and the suggestion, it doesn't say open enrollment. It says to close for grade three.
Yeah, I, I said open enrollment when I.
Right.
When I asked for the motion. So this is just suggested, but.
Okay.
The motion that I asked for did say open enrollment because I noted that as well.
Correct. I just saw it and I thought, oh, do we have to change that first? Okay.
Yep. Any other discussion? One thing that I will note, Superintendent Stenbik, whether this is the appropriate time or not, but as we're kind of discussing, you know, the need to close classes, to open enrollment due to capacity, I am not opposed if we need to do special call meetings. I know that September 10 isn't that far away.
Yeah.
But a lot can happen between now and September 10. And we do want to make sure that our teachers and our students are in classroom settings that are most conducive to learning. So I just want to throw that out there, that if we're seeing, you know, significant increases of enrollment and we're seeing large class sizes, that if, you know, obviously, together we can determine if we do a special call meeting.
Given that, given that there is room in Highland, for Highland fifth grade, that's where the recommendation is to kind of divert to Highland for until September 10 or, you know, reassess. So we do have that option. North Park fifth grade is, is as full as Valley View though.
Fantastic. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. Next we have our second action item, superintendent goals. Superintendent Stenbik.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board. At the last work session, we discussed my goals for the 24, 25 school year. All of the goals are aligned, or each of the two goals are aligned to one of the eight standards from the Minnesota School Boards Association. So goal one is actually a continu, a continuation from the previous year, which is to oversee and monitor the district-wide focus on literacy, including the implementation of professional development, instruction, coaching, resources, and leadership. And this is a.
And this is aligned to MSBA standard six, which is teaching and learning. And then goal two is implement and monitor the Minnesota State Attendance Pilot Program in Columbia Heights Public Schools as part of Minnesota House File 5237 with the aim of improving student attendance. This is aligned to MSBA standard seven. So with the goals, there is a mid-year check-in and conversation and then there's an end of the year evaluation as well. And, and that comes publicly after that. So this evening, I'm seeking approval for the two goals.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the 2024-2025 superintendent's goals as presented?
So.
Julie?
Second.
And a second by Laura. Any discussion? Jessica?
I endorse these goals. I think that they align really well with some of our larger scale initiatives that we're, we're focused on this year, in particular around the attendance project that Superintendent Stenbik has the, the space and the capacity to be able to really focus on that as a name school district in that bill, that we're able to be a leader in that space, which is exciting. And I also just wanted to note that we had substantial conversation around these goals at the work session and that while these goals focus on a couple of particular areas of large scale importance this year, that this, this is, they don't represent sort of like the entirety of like Superintendent Stenbik's focus. And so we had a lot of discussion around that too. So folks, if, in the community, if this is your first time looking at this, this is really focus goals on top of the regular work of the superintendent and not like a check off of like, one, two, okay, I did my job. So just, just to be, to be clear about that. And I just wanted to add my notes about my own personal endorsement of those goals. So thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
I was going to say similar, that, yeah, we had a really great conversation about it and why you are focusing on these particular areas. And I think it also not only is aligned with where the board is, but moreover, where our community has said through the strategic planning, their importance of the work that, that we're doing and that you're doing with the staff here. So I agree. Thank you so much for, for being far more succinct and better at, at explaining it than me, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Stenbik. We look forward to the mid-year review. Next, we have board topics. Does anybody have any board topics? Because I have a list.
Wow.
Wow, okay.
I've added it. It's not too bad. There's only really two things. First is.
You just grow big?
Yeah. First is the, as kind of in conversation to, or in relation to the conversations had about the school board goals, the school law conferences. There are two upcoming school law conferences. One is on September 20. That one, if you're interested in attending that one, please let Stephanie know ASAP as that one is, has said that space is limited. That is a full day conference.
Which one is that? That's the special ed one, right?
That's the.
That's the general ed one.
Yep. Yep, Squires et al. Law Conference. So September 20. So again, let Stephanie know ASAP if you're interested in that one. And then there is also one on November 8. Again, a full day conference. So those are two upcoming. So that one isn't necessarily an ASAP, but if that one does work for you, please let Stephanie know.
And those are both on Fridays.
Which is kind of nice.
The other item that we have is that, as was put in our update, we can have up to three board members participate in a discussion on the safety of county roadways. And if there is anybody who is interested, I'd like to know now, if at all possible, to, so that we can get that out to the coordinators of that meeting so they can arrange schedules. So Member Granland has already emailed me and expressed interest in that. Is there anybody else who would be interested in participating in the discussion on the safety of county roadways?
I would be interested.
Jessica? Anybody else? And we don't have to have three, it's just, we can have up to three because of quorum, so.
What is the commitment on, on that?
Go ahead.
So the city is working with the county and they have a doodle poll. So for the three board members that are interested, we'll, we'll email you the city's doodle poll and then you would list what your availability is. And then once everyone has responded, then the folks at the city can determine the date of the meeting. So I would imagine it's an hour or two meeting, but I don't know the date or the scope of the time.
That's always the roll of the dice here.
Yep.
I would love to participate. I just don't know if I can.
Well, let's put you down.
So I mean, if somebody can be, you know, I mean, if somebody can definitely say that they want to, you know, that they, that they can commit to it, then I can step aside, so.
I, I would say we can go ahead if Julie and Michelle are okay with that and I'm fine with that.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, we'll put you, the three of you down.
I'm in the same place you are.
And then, yeah, Laurie, put down your availability and if it works out, then, then excellent.
Yeah, I've got five minutes every couple of weeks.
So then the, the three. So then the three board members can expect an email from me tonight or, well, probably not tomorrow morning with convocation, but we'll do it tonight. So you can look for that and then click on the link and it'll take you to the doodle poll. Thank you.
Yeah, so Mary, Jessica, and Laura.
Got it.
Perfect. Great, thank you all and we look forward to you reporting back. Last item I have is just a reminder that convocation is tomorrow. So arrive by 9:30 for a prompt start at 9:45. So really just an exciting time of year to, to kick off. If you, if you can't make it in the morning for the convocation piece, at least if you can join us for the picnic after, which will be right out here around 11?
Approximately between 11:15, 11:30.
Blue and gold.
Yes.
Blue and gold.
Wear your blue and gold.
Yes. Got new shirts.
And we were just talking at the chair meeting about parking and the, the. Horseshoe will be closed for parking. It's probably going to be really tricky to find parking across the street because we will have all of the staff here. So just be, yeah.
Yes.
The horseshoe will be open for the family center and folks to come and enroll. But the typical entrance will be blocked off because we'll have our picnic in the front yard.
So just be mindful of, you know, don't roll in at 9:42 expecting to park right out front, so.
It'll be across the street.
It's really just a great energetic, you know, way to support our teams as we kick off the school year. So I hope to see you all there.
And it's in the pack?
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, so please join and wear your blue and gold. And we should all have T-shirts that we can wear, so.
And you don't say, you don't say one.
Right.
It's very important.
Topics? All right, hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at 6:59.